We have a form.
We got a form. So let's go ahead. Fledgling allegiance.
We've got a form.
Fledgling allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um.
I must have hit the wrong button.
The slate is filling in tonight for Reverend Mathias. You want to call the roll?
I will indeed. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross is not here. Slate is here. Dr. Faubert's excused also. Dr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
President Baker.
Here.
Present.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Um, oh, here's, um, Mr.
Well, that's very good. Just in time.
So I guess we're passing over the secretary duties to your secretary emeritus. Secretary emeritus.
That's right. You want me to keep on going?
He's good at it.
He's good at it.
My apologies. Excuse me. I blame it on the weather.
So everybody that approves the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have an agenda.
Agenda items.
Tonight, we have no celebrations. And we have no student representatives of the board here. Thanks for weathering the weather tonight. So anyway, um, public comment for board agenda items.
We do have one for, uh, for Ms. Mary Bowen.
Alex.
It's balance. Oh, balance. Excuse me.
Would you like a, um, one-minute warning? Okay. You'll be short. Okay.
Uh, Dr. Baker, Ms. Evans, and board members, I would like to draw your attention to the Academic Achievement Committee report, specifically the Priority Schools section at the end of the report, page twenty-two. The end of the first paragraph states that GREA is in agreement with the work in the buildings. I'm wondering how this conclusion was reached. Since I took office in mid-September, I have been approached a total of zero times on this issue. When I read the statement in question, um, I started checking it out and I texted, uh, former president Paul Halders, why does he approve any of the priority school plans last year? Last year. He stated that, that he had not. He went on to say that Cindy Pickett asked him to sign off on the priority schools plans, but he had refused to do so. While I cannot say why he refused to sign off on the plans, I can say why I haven't signed off on them. It's because I haven't been asked to and I've never seen them. I know how important it is to all of you that the board's reports reflect the kind of integrity that each has personally. And with this in mind, I would ask that you amend the academic achievement report to remove the false statement or feeling that, consider not approving the report at all. And obviously, if there is a signed document somewhere that shows our agreement with these plans, if you could forward me a copy of that, that'd be great. Thank you.
So actually, it's okay. Can you, uh, this is from the January twentieth meeting that you, that you're referring to? Okay. Okay. Um, next is secretary's report and, uh...
Yeah, just a reminder about, uh, this is FAST for Time, um, the free application for financial student aid. That's the first step before students receiving financial aid for college. That includes, um, federal loans, grants, and many scholarships. And that is due March first. And for the most part, just for everyone with students on their way to college, this is often a kind of a first-come, first-served piece as far as availability of aid. So definitely March first is, uh, an important deadline, although you can submit afterwards. Um, anyone, any question, contact their school counselor for information about FAST nights at the different high schools and, uh, information to help their child and their family complete that FAST application. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. And yes, I know the school principals and counselors will help with that and that if you are trying to master that on your own, it's, you know, please feel free to get help. So, next is the superintendent's report and we do have Ms. Evans sitting in for the superintendent tonight.
Yes, I'd like Callie to come up and she's going to provide an update on the school expo.
Mrs. Evans, President Baker, members of the board, I'm here to present an update on the school choice expo. As you know, last Thursday, the expo was planned and weather conditions caused us to cancel school and the expo. I'm happy to announce that we have rescheduled the expo for Tuesday, February twenty-fourth. We will have a free dinner, bounce house, kids' activities, balloon animals, and of course, information on our wonderful theme schools and centers of innovation. We are promoting the new date through radio and TV ads, social media, the WeRGR newsletter and website, robocalls, and more. We hope to have a large turnout and considerably better weather.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Where is it again?
It's at City High Middle School, four to seven p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will let Mr. Helmut know that you did such a good job, you can sit in more often. So, yeah. All right. Um, action items. Um, our first action item is, um, the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Budget Amendment One. Um, and...
Mr. Flores here, if you want him.
Yeah, I was hoping that Larry could. I didn't know if you wanted to ask him. Okay. Wait, actually, yeah, I'll work on it.
Good evening, Dr. Baker and members of the, uh, school board. Uh, Amendment One, which we brought before the Finance Committee, uh, last Monday. As you're well aware, when we finish our budget process, a budget you approved last June, uh, there's always changes that occur after that process. Um, one, uh, very fundamental that you're aware of is that we came in better enrollment-wise. So, if you look at change of the budget after the first six months of the school year, uh, we present to you the Amendment One to that budget. The major factors, changes, if you will, since the originally approved budget are really twofold. One is enrollment came in better than expected. So that resulted in about two-point-two million dollars in estimate, an additional state aid for this, for this, um, school year. And then, um, also, on the expenditure side, we approved, uh, those compensation increases for all our employees last fall and that were not initially budgeted. So that is, is a major impact on, on the expenditure side in terms of this budget amendment. The net effect, there's some other, some other adjustments there as we true up, uh, retirement rates and those, and that kind of information. Uh, the net impact on fund balance, which we're trying to get to that ten percent figure, the original budget that you approved last June got us, got us to an estimated fund balance at the end of this year of about five-point-two percent. Guideline is going to hit ten percent, plus or minus five percent, preferably plus five percent. Uh, after the, after the budget amendment, if you approve it tonight, will that estimated fund balance actually be an increase? It'll be about five-and-a-half percent. Um, still have work to do, obviously, but, um, uh, the impact is, is really a positive in, positive on fund balance opposed to negative. So that's the general nature of this, of this Amendment One. We, we also probably will look at, continue to look at, uh, results throughout the rest of remain of the year. I believe last year, we had an amendment, too, that came in May. Uh, that may occur again this year, but, uh, we'll see as the remainder of the year goes on here.
Questions? You guys have a good discussion of it at Finance Committee?
Briefly, I'll just reiterate the comments I made, which are, um, the takeaway I have from this is, first of all, um, the superintendent's going to be able to do her job more effectively if she's got a fund balance that's comfortable. Um, so this is progress, it's movement in the right direction, but I, uh, we're not where we ought to be yet. Um, so I think it's, I think it's good to realize this is incremental progress, but not, not, uh, completion. And the second point I made really was that, um, I think that this is clearly the fruits of successful retention and recruitment efforts, and those efforts are critical. And, um, so I, I hope we continue to keep an eye on that because if that amendment, if the numbers show us anything, it's that the most important, the easiest way for us to be fiscally, uh, healthy is to make sure that our enrollment numbers are where they are being.
Uh, Dr. Flores?
I made one, uh, small suggestion during that session. Didn't see it reflected in the minutes, but I think it's, it's relevant, and that is that we ought to incentivize enrollment, uh, early enrollment. See if we can't, uh, put a boost into, uh, enrollment numbers.
What, uh, I'm sorry. What do you mean by that?
Incentivize, meaning that look for corporate incentives that we could, we could have donated where, where, uh, people would get some kind of a, an incentive, whether it's a, um, uh, Taco, Taco Bell or a...
Oh, okay.
Something, something mine, or if we can, if we could give people a modest gift card for enrolling early. I mean, the, or, the earlier we know where we are, the, the better, better off we are. So...
Maybe it's, maybe it's choice of the, of selected school or teacher, you know? There's wonderful teachers that we have in this district.
I don't know about that, but, um, it, the ideas, I, I think is a good idea.
Don't go any further.
Yeah. Dr. Randles, would you like to, uh, add to this, as treasurer and chair of that?
Uh, it's going to be a great committee. There were a lot of dedicated, interested people, uh, board members and staff that were, uh, in attendance, so it's, uh, too much more to add, I think. Adding, uh, a lot over, uh, this next year, trying to come up with an annual calendar and tweaking the process.
I did have one comment, um, and I appreciate it very much, but they no longer are fifteen-minute meetings. This one was a couple hours, wasn't it? Thank you.
It was an hour fifteen, if I remember correctly. But it was not fifteen. It did feel like a long time, and I did, uh...
It was good.
I did clarify that generally, uh, they were fifteen. I didn't think they would be fifteen any longer. And, uh, but that one did go over. A lot of questions and a lot of dialogue.
And I mean, it was a good meeting, so, I mean, it is a compliment.
Thank you.
I did hear that it's going to challenge the Academic Achievement Committee for length of meetings.
No, I, I certainly hope not.
Well, I'm not chair anymore, so maybe, maybe that'll change. And then, uh, I did hear good things about the discussion, so, um, okay.
Any other, um, questions for Larry, um, now that we've congratulated ourselves? Any questions for Larry regarding the Budget Amendment, because we, do we have to vote on this?
No.
Okay, thanks. Do I hear a motion to, um...
Make a motion to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Budget Amendment.
Support.
Dr. Flores, supports.
Larry, one point of clarification. Didn't we make two motions on this at Finance? Do we have to do two here?
Yeah, yeah, we actually need a motion to approve the Amendment One of the General Fund, Amendment One for the Special Revenue Fund.
They have to be separate votes, I believe.
Separate votes, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Slate, could you read?
Budget Amendment One, which one? General.
General Fund.
That's the motion I made for the General Fund.
Support again.
Dr. Flores, as second to that.
Okay. Pastor Moody? Yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
And then, a second motion?
Larry, what's the form for the, what's the vocabulary?
Special, the Special Revenue Fund.
Okay, I'll move the, we adopt the Budget One Amendment to the Special Revenue Fund.
Support.
Pastor Moody? Yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
And then, a second motion?
Larry, what's the form for the, what's the vocabulary?
Special, the Special Revenue Fund.
Okay, I'll move the, we adopt the Budget One Amendment to the Special Revenue Fund.
Support.
Pastor Moody? Yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
And President Baker?
Yes.
That motion passed at seven-zero.
Okay, we have a second item, um, that we might also get...
Sure. Real quickly, it's just procedural. Um, the district has been a member of the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool for a number of years, a pool of districts that we essentially buy our non-union health insurance through. And, uh, all members of that pool have a board member assigned or appointed by the governing board of the district. In the transition of folks, uh, we never got that changed, so the, the current, um, Freddie and, and Julie Davis, I believe, are currently designated as, as both the member and the alternate. This resolution, which is required by the bylaws of the insurance pool, is to just approve, uh, Lisa Steed, who was our benefit manager, as the board member, and me as the alternate. Doesn't change anything else other than just that.
Okay. So moved.
Support.
All right.
All right. Uh, Pastor Moody? Yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
That two passes seven-zero.
All right, next we have the consent agenda grouping. Yes.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to make a, uh, motion to remove the, uh, Academic Achievement Committee meeting notes, uh, report from the consent agenda and vote on it, uh, separately.
Okay.
Making a motion?
Yeah, and moving that we remove that and vote on approval of that separately.
I'll support.
Okay. Um, any discussion? Okay, so, uh, now I need a motion. So you're making the motion for the consent agenda minus the Academic Achievement Committee meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, Dr. Flores, you're okay with not, not pulling the Finance Committee minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, uh, this is the vote for the consent agenda grouping minus the Academic Achievement Committee meeting minutes.
That was, uh, Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
And Mr. Flores, second. All right. Pastor Moody? Yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Consent agenda minus Academic Achievement Minutes passes seven-zero.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Legrand?
Uh, make a motion to modify the, uh, minutes for the, uh, Academic Achievement Committee for what seems to have been essentially a typo, uh, in, in light of, um, the MEA president's, uh, testimony, uh, so that we simply, uh, delete reference to, uh, MEA support for the, uh, for the, for the, um, plans for the, what are they called?
GREA.
Right.
Priority schools.
Priority schools. Right. So I'd make a motion that we delete that from the report, the reference to GRE, GREA support for the plan for priority schools from the, from those minutes.
And you need support for that?
Correct.
Support.
So we have any discussion regarding that? Um, anybody want to weigh in on?
I think the issue would be that that should go to the, my, my idea would be... It would go to the GREA for review and approval, should they choose to sign?
Clearly, there's, I mean, there's two issues. One is, when in doubt, minutes should be accurate. And so I think this is a fairly simple, and, and exerting that doesn't mean anything about whether the GREA may support in the future, already does support, doesn't support, but clearly the minutes, uh, we've had pretty good testimony, the minutes are inaccurate. So I think the appropriate thing to do is, um, exert that. And I think what naturally, more importantly follows here is that there will be some follow-up communication about, uh, GREA engagement on the, uh, with the, with the administration on those...
Ms. Evans, does this relate to, uh, because I'm actually not clear on what it is, this is in saying GREA is in agreement with, um, in relationship to these two schools, so can you respond?
And, and actually, Dr. Baker, I am not, as well. So I, I think the issue would be, or the challenge would be, to, uh, make sure that our documents are in alignment with what the state is asking of.
Right.
And then that we take the appropriate, uh, steps, because certainly it was not an intentional omission.
Right, I'm sure.
So we'll make sure that we follow, uh, the, uh, steps outlined by the state.
And that we do that.
Absolutely. I, I think it may be, and, and, and probably, I shouldn't speak off the record, we will make sure that we follow the process.
Should we, um, just wait on voting on the minutes until after the Achievement Committee has rediscussed it in their February meeting? Or should we go ahead and, and do as, um, Mr. Legrand suggested, just vote on it minus at one sentence?
My recommendation would be vote on it minus that, and then take that to the GREA review.
We're simply talking about, you know, approving something, a, a smaller document. That's all we're really doing. We're not making a statement about anything.
So the previous sentence is correct. The signature page needs to be completed, sent for both, so that's, that was discussed there. Okay. All right, then, I guess, so, Mr. Legrand's, um...
I think Ms. Slate supported, right?
Stay second.
Okay.
Pastor Moody? Yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
And President Baker?
Yes.
That motion passed at seven-zero.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, so. All right. Um, discussion items. No discussion items on the agenda. Um, next is public comment for non-agenda items.
We have one from, uh, Mr. C. Novak, Brandy Novak.
Well, Brandy did.
You've got the right sweatshirt on. At least I've got a little leaner, right? Um, I believe the picture is worth the price of murder. But what I'm going to hand you here is my house. My son is a single parent. He has two children.
Actually, Mr. Novak, after you hand that out, why don't you, um, have a seat and, and then give us, uh, your name and address so we can make sure we get it on record?
All right. So, so...
You want to be mic'd when you're talking, that's all. You want to be on the mic. That's all.
Thank you.
And then also, Mr. Novak, after you introduce yourself, would you like a one-minute warning? Because it's, we have three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have that one-minute warning.
Yeah.
Sing here.
Oh, yeah, 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 I got it.
But, Jill, the reason I'm here tonight is due to the transportation of my two grandchildren. And the reason that I'm doing this is because my son is a single working parent, and I've handled this situation. My grandchildren go to Coit Elementary School, and the issue is transportation. Um, if you look at the map, you know, they live right across from Highland Park. So every morning, they ride, they, they walk north up to college, they cross college at Lydia and go down and catch the bus where the X is marked, at Union and Lydia. People are not shoveling their sidewalks and bringing their, sad but true. So, so they're trudging through snow every morning.
And my children have to cross college, which is a major, you know, street with buses and trucks and big vehicles.
From Lydia, the bus comes up, travels west, college in Lydia makes a right-hand turn, goes down to Bradford north, makes a left onto Bradford, comes down to St. Clair, makes another left, and stops at an address there and picks up one child at his home. It proceeds, takes a left, goes down to Moore, stops at the stop sign, turns right, and proceeds to Coit School. What we're asking will not cost the board any money. It will not require them to change any routes or add an additional bus. Okay? All we're asking is that our children be allowed to catch the bus at St. Clair and Moore, or Moore and College. Everybody I've talked to, ex-employees, parents, uh, members of the community, when I explained this to them, they couldn't believe how ridiculous it was that they couldn't be picked up at this spot. I've talked to supervisors here and they tell me, my son lives in a dead spot. Well, the reason he lives in a dead spot is you close Eastern School, so he's out of it. If he, if they wanted to go to East Leonard, they would have to walk even further to catch a bus. So all we're asking you to do is overturn Mr. Johnson and Mr. Cinco's decision not to change the situation for my grandchildren. When I talked, uh, to the supervisors here, one of the questions I asked them, what comes first? And what I heard out of all the supervisors and the superintendent's assistant, Dana, kids come first. So if this is true, my expectation would be to turn, overturn Mr. Cinco's and Mr. Johnson's decision to leave the kids down on Lydia and Union. It was eleven degrees below zero last week, and they stood there for a half an hour. I've invited the supervisors to come and make the same walk. They don't want to do it. They don't want to make that walk that, that my grandchildren are making, just to make a point. And I feel if the kids come first, rules, regulations, policies, and procedures should be set aside, and let's do it, not for me, not like for my son, but for the children. If the children are most important, they're walking a distance that they don't really have them to walk, two-and-a-half blocks extra, when they can get picked up five doors away from their home, or even farther back. I want to thank the board for allowing me to say that.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate your perspective. Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right, we have one more. Uh, uh, Mr. Bill Dykstra.
I appreciate you, John.
Yeah, can you please, uh, introduce yourself and give us your agenda?
Certainly. Bill Dykstra. I'm about the northwest side of Grand Rapids. Um, I'm fifty-five years old. I'm dyslexic, and I'm really challenged with comprehension and reading. One of the things that really concerns me in our educational world is we stress the importance of reading. We stress that.
We stress that.
We stress that. But we don't stress the importance of comprehension. I will read something fifteen, twenty times, and still many times I have no idea the meaning of what I read. And I don't hear anyone in our educational system stressing the importance of comprehending. I don't hear anyone talking about that. What I'd like to see do, I know teachers are limited, I know, I know our school system is limited, and I know our budgets are limited. I would really like...
Deceit.
Well, first, before I say that, I have never met a bored, intellectually challenged person, but the people that I meet are bored, are brilliant. I would really like to see our educational system use our brilliant students that are really challenged, that, I mean, that are intellectually wise, quick, smart, fast, and help them be less challenged to work with students that are really challenged. One-third of all juveniles who have a learning disability, they're incarcerated. We need to get to them quickly and help them use this. There's a statement, "Parents, your kids are a message and a blessing you send to a time and place you cannot go." We really need to think about that, and importance to comprehend is critical. Reading, I wish I didn't read, because it's so frustrating when I read and I don't comprehend. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you for your concern.
That's it. No others. No others.
All right. Ms. Evans, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, board member comments. I'll just start with Dr. Flores and work our way this way.
Well, I read in the Academic Achievement Committee minutes that the time was being changed, and I'm sure that there's probably relevant reasons for that logically, people have their schedules and whatnot. But one of the comments was made, I believe, by Louise Wilson about the lack of consideration for teachers attending those meetings. It's very difficult for them to make meetings at 9:00 instead of, I believe, 4:30 when the meetings were scheduled. I was wondering if this board might, at some future time, look at that and devise ways that we could accommodate teacher participation in the Academic Achievement Committee, because I think that's so important. Likewise, the Finance Committee. There are things that go on and that are reported in the Finance Committee that teachers ought to be aware of, such as their level of participation in systems that we approve or that we adopt for the district. And I, again, echo concerns about the level of participation by teachers in the selection of data input systems, as, for an example, that we just recently discussed in Finance. So just want to leave that for my colleagues to think about. Thank you.
Mr. LaGranne?
Well, we heard, I think, the first rumbling of someone pointing out that no one shovels their sidewalks in Grand Rapids. And sometimes we have people come in here and plaintively ask us to do something about it. So for the benefit of the population out there, so you all know, city enforcement on this is driven by complaints, and the city has a nice 3-1-1 system now, and you can call in up to three houses who don't shovel their sidewalks. So when I walk places with my daughter, who is blind and has a cane, which means she functionally can't walk at all, because she can't find the sidewalk if people aren't shoveling, I've been just chipping away at the regular routes that we walk and calling in people who don't shovel their sidewalks. So avail yourself of that system, and I've been telling other people who are pedestrians about it. Grand Rapids makes a lot of noise about wanting to be pedestrian-friendly, but, boy, we really are good at plowing parking lots and not so good at keeping our sidewalks clean.
I appreciate the gentleman who made the comment about dyslexia. I think it's very important that we do teach children the reference of comprehension. But however, I do want you to know that there are things that are taking place, or there are, teachers are teaching kids on comprehension and reading. I think the school system has gotten 100% better when it comes to reading, writing, and math. So there's a lot of things that are being taken place that you probably don't hear about. So I would make a great suggestion to you, that would be to go up to the schools and find out what they are teaching kids in reference to reading. It's very important. Secondly, as far as the Academic Achievement Committee's time change, it was at my discretion to make that time change. There were no teachers coming to the meetings at 4:00, but maybe one or two. And that went on for at least a couple of years. So I didn't see the need to carry it on too at 4:00. If teachers are interested in coming, give me a call, and maybe I can try to work something out and talk with you on a personal level. But at this point in time, 9:00 is, I feel, is sufficient.
Dr. Randalls?
The, one thing I would like to say about bus route and changing, I haven't had a child on the bus, because I have high schoolers now, but Dean Transport handles that, and I don't know if Mr. Johnson really was integrally involved, because technically, he wouldn't be. And so, they did change pickup for our children, and I wasn't on the school board at the time, with the school bus driver had suggested it. Then Dean Transport wasn't too happy with the school bus driver suggesting that. So I would continue to work with them, and perhaps Mr. Johnson can help ease the way that way, but it's beyond the auspices of Grand Rapids Public Schools, because we now contract that business.
I just received some information about Dr. Tom Jackson, has passed away. Tom was a former board member, a good friend, and he and his wife were good friends of mine. She, in fact, was my administrative assistant for a long time. He's a wonderful man. I'm saddened by that, so...
When was he on the board?
Oh, gosh, probably in the 80s. It was a...
It's back in the 80s.
Wow. You guys have been around so long. It's like...
He was a professor at Grand Valley.
Okay.
Wonderful guy.
Memory is elusive.
Evidently not.
Time goes by.
So...
I'm sad for those people who may...
It's good to hear there's at least 30 years or so after...
That's right.
...board service.
That's right. You had a good life. It did. It's a wonderful man.
Thanks. Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Well, thanks for the weather. I hope you all came out and enjoyed the learning experience, if that's what you were here, so, anyway. We do this first and third Monday, so, anyway, thanks a lot, and we'll see you next time.